Thanks for coming, Chief. Are you gonna stay for a little bit? You're welcome. When you leave and you're home and you're watching the game, are you gonna send us text updates on the score? Because I can't watch it.
I heard there was a double rainbow there today.
I thought it was yesterday.
Single yesterday.
Have a good night, Mr. Devine.
I heard there was a single yesterday, and then they were saying, "No rainbow." Then somebody says, "Yeah, there was a double, but no one got it on their phone today."
Nancy, don't stop picking your apartment yet.
I was gonna say something.
No, this is a good habit.
She's like, "I'm gonna take one on the third floor in the back."
Yeah, just say you got the windows overlooking the court.
Hey, for the first 11 years we were married, we lived on the third floor. And we bought it after we lived there seven years. And when Chris said that about the height, the peak in that house was 40 feet. I think my husband hung from a skyhook. And when we got the ladder truck, I was on the finance committee, and there were people that didn't feel we should do that because we didn't have any big houses. I said, "You better check off the ones on Main Street. There's like four in a row," you know? Oh, I think we're in living color here.
Just a moment, Cable. Just waiting for Karen and Mallory.
Thank you. Enjoy your night.
Have a good night, Jim. Oh, okay. Sweet. Thank you, Mallory. Hi, everyone. Hi, Sam. Just a moment, Cable.
When we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing because we've got three people we want to mention and ask for a moment of silence.
Okay. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:37, and I've called this meeting to order. It is Wednesday, October 24th, 2018. This is your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. It will be audio and video recorded. It will be replayed on Channel 9 and placed on YouTube as well. And with that, I ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to mention the passing of three residents, Mrs. Barbara Horton, Vincent Malaguti, and Joan Tomy. These were all recent passings, and I would ask for a moment of silence in their memory at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. First on the agenda this evening, under public input, and we will do public input, but first, I wanted, we have our junior firefighters here and some regular firefighters who are here to discuss the Corporal Dutra Memorial. I believe you did a project or something over there? Absolutely. Mr. Madeiras. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
That junior firefighters were looking for a community service project, and we already did the Dutra Memorial. We put a new sign post in. We repainted the sign, put a new arm. I did some finishing touches on it yesterday. Put a copper cap on top and made so the sign didn't swing so it wouldn't hit the post. I'm very proud of these guys. They take pride in their community. Steven Roger Conyenne, Camden Ramos, and Joshua Desmond. Couple of them are at school tonight, so they could make it here.
Can we give everyone a round of applause? Thank you.
So I have a letter I want to get to the board. It reads, "Dear Board of Selectmen, as you're aware, the Dyed Junior Firefighters have replaced the sign post and repainted the sign located at the Corporal John L. Dutra Memorial Square. It was an honor and a privilege to complete this project. During this project, it was brought to our attention that Corporal Dutra was a member of the Dyed Fire Department. So it is for this reason we have voted that each spring the Dyed Junior Firefighters will repaint the Corporal John L. Dutra Memorial Square to be completed before each Memorial Day. Being said, the Dyed Junior Firefighters are requesting permission from the Dyed Board of Selectmen to access the Corporal L. John Dutra Memorial Square each spring so that we can plant flowers and remount the area around the sign and the stone. Respectfully, Thomas Madeiras."
Thank you. So if it's okay with my colleagues, I'll entertain motions to allow the junior firefighters to work on the memorial before Memorial Day every spring.
Okay. I think it's a great idea, and I support it. Has anyone talked to the Veterans Agent?
Mr. Hershey came by the station and thanked us for doing the project. I did approach him and let him know we were doing the project. I did approach family members of Corporal Dutra.
Okay. And did you talk to him about annual maintenance?
Uh, no.
Okay. That's the only thing I would ask, is that Mr. Hershey give us a recommendation on the annual maintenance? Because I think it's a great idea. And I know over the years, when we have had parades, sometimes the parade started there. More recently, we've been starting at Giorgio's. But I know that Mr. Hershey and others who have been Veterans Agents have gone there and either placed a wreath and done a small ceremony if we didn't start there. So that would be the only thing I'd request, but I think it's a great idea. I think you should be commended. And if you could give, could you read all the names? Because you said there are some...
Ian Easter, who was not here. And Dylan Strease is not here. And that's it.
So instead of delaying this, because we have bi-weekly meetings now, and our next one isn't until the second, I think we can take a vote and just have it be contingent upon approval of the Veterans Agent because I do think Mr. Hershey also has a say.
And I will make that motion that we approve the request. First of all, first, we thank you for making this effort for this community service project and that we approve the request for annual maintenance contingent upon a recommendation from the Veterans Agent, Mr. Hershey.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Information that I found out over the last several weeks. East Tennessee Veterans Memorial is a public plaza with a formal arrangement of granite pillars with the names of 6,262 fallen heroes from 335 East Tennessee counties. Corporal Dutra is on one of those pillars there. He must have been stationed in East Tennessee.
Wow.
Corporal El Don John Dutra is inscribed on pillar number 21 in Sullivan County. I'm gonna give you this if you want it.
Thank you.
Corporal Dutra was also a member of the 63rd Field Infantry Battalion, 24th Infantry Division. Corporal Dutra was killed in action while fighting the enemy along the Kwam River in South Korea the day after he arrived in Korea. Corporal Dutra was awarded the following: Purple Heart Korean Service Medal, United States Service Medal, National Defense Service Medal, the Korean Presidential Union Citation, and the Republic of Korea War Service Medal. So it's very honorable that we did this.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And thank you. I know that public services can be tough, but we appreciate you doing that and continuing to do it every year. So thank you very much, gentlemen. Bright future. Thank you very much, Thomas. I appreciate it. Absolutely. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Go Sox.
Someone text us the score.
I'm not allowed to watch. I started watching yesterday. They were falling behind. I went to bed, eight to four. You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I am not gonna watch.
I walked from the kitchen to the bedroom and missed the biggest hit of the night, the free run homer. My husband had fallen asleep, so I...
So now you have to do that every night? At the same time?
I gotta stay in the kitchen or something. I don't know.
Any other public input? Okay. So at this time, I'm going to yield the floor to our Town Administrator, Mallory Ehrenstein.
Good evening. So in the interest of sharing communication and increasing our communication with the school department, I have begun meeting with Dr. Azar. It's going to be monthly, and we had our first one. So I'm here just sending over some updates on the school. I think a lot of times their progress gets, you know, people don't know about it. So I'm just gonna try to share all of that. So their roof that we finally got Rehoboth voted on, and we finally got underway, is now underway. They're working on that. It's going well. Project's going well. The modulars, they are also permitted. They're ordered. They're being built off-site. Then they'll be brought in over here, and they are on time so far. I mean, I know it's early, but they're on time and slated for a November occupancy date.
And just as an FYI, because I'm not part of those meetings, they are keeping our Building Commissioner in the loop on everything, correct?
Yes, absolutely. And he's, and then I basically follow up on, make sure that he is. But yes, he speaks with the facilities manager at the school regularly about those projects.
Perfect.
And I know that Mrs. Brady has also been in communication with the staff there, too, so...
Thank you.
Absolutely. And as part of that article, you know, they have to keep us, the warrant article, they have to keep us surprised of what's going on for the money. Okay. The other exciting thing coming out of that is we had requested that they really get started on their district-wide school study committee. And they have applied through NESDEC to do a demographic survey and study, which will help us figure out really what kind of numbers we're dealing with. So that's very good. And also...
Excuse me. Did they give you a timetable when they're gonna get an answer on that?
No, but they just did it. I would say like a year. But that could probably be conservative.
Not only that, but I would assume that the, like, even if NESDEC gives them a bunch of demographic data, the committee will be the folks who analyze it and kind of make recommendations or determinations or whatever.
Right. Well, NESDEC also works with their needs. So this would be potentially increasing what would be available to students, like technologically-wise, technology-wise, and different things like that. So it goes sort of hand-in-hand. And then that information is used to create, okay, do we stay here? Do we renovate? Do we add? Do we find a new building? And that's where the committee would really be integral. And I would hope that there's some membership from the town side on that.
NESSEC is going to study the district, not just data.
Correct. Everything's the district.
And on the modulars, you said they've been audited. They're gonna be here in November, but they won't be ready to occupy.
No, they said occupancy by November.
Oh.
I know. The hardest part is installation. It's like getting it here. No, they're being built and customized. But the hardest part is installation, which is why we started the ball with some, I call it seed money, in June. At the June Town Meeting, we gave them a little bit to get started, but...
Would they be moving? No, I'm just, I'm thinking of my question. Would they be moving students around?
Mid-year.
That was my concern. I thought from that presentation that they did, and I have a copy at home, that they were gonna wait till January. Am I remembering that correctly? So even if it's here in November...
Some of those one-on-one rooms might start being open. Just because they're slated for occupancy doesn't mean they'll move in. It's their occupancy permit. They're like ready. I don't think they're moving any classroom operations.
Like the whole fourth grade, which is...
No.
Okay.
But I do know that there are some schools on a cart right now, like some classes, like the music class.
I believe, yeah.
So that might be kind of spread out earlier rather than later.
I just don't wanna disrupt. And I know they're mindful of that, so... Okay. Sorry, Natalie.
No problem. I think I lost myself. So I said the need study, right? Did I add that? Okay. Then we also discussed something that's a little bit important to me, increasing the role of the School Resource Officer and DARE or some other drug abuse resistance education program. And we are working with the police department. We're working with the school system. They were very open and receptive to it. So thank you very much. They have agreed to work with us. We're gonna design a program and pilot it at the Dyed Middle School because the argument is...
That's where I did my DARE program. Okay.
The argument is if you get to the kids in their middle school years, they're more likely to adopt that as like a way of life. So it's exciting.
It is very exciting. And I do appreciate you being the originator of that sort of suggestion to pursue that. I do have one suggestion for you because I know you'll be the one kind of with your hands on on this. Just include former Sergeant Dutra in that. I had like a three-hour conversation with him about the DARE program, and he has a lot of...
Great.
Yeah, like wealth of knowledge on that.
Pick his brain.
You see, didn't he move?
Yeah, he's in Florida. He's in Florida. He has a cellphone.
Well, yeah, if you could forward...
I will.
And then just make sure it's welcome that I call him. And then I'll sure do that.
Will this program be in both middle schools?
So we're only piloting it in Dyed. Just to see how it goes, which is something that they've done. They do that. But my hope is that, yes, that it would be. But of course, that would be up to Rehoboth.
Of course.
Okay.
Good work.
Well, and one more thing. That's very, very cool. So the Dyed and Rehoboth Regional School District is going to be awarded tomorrow night, sorry for the late notice, tomorrow night for the TRAIN Award for Excellence in Energy Efficiency. So well done to the school, particularly the project is the solar panels on the car canopies. It's very exciting. I think I remember them telling me that this is the only school in the United States chosen for this award. So well done, DR. That's very, it's very awesome to have that kind of prestige coming to our school system. So good job.
And I think that's scheduled for 6 o'clock tomorrow night?
6 o'clock tomorrow night in the auditorium. The public is invited if you wanna go cheer on our Falcons. Very good. So that is my school update. Does anybody have any questions on that? Yeah, absolutely. The other item that, I have a couple other items. The Selectmen's Rules and Procedures that is before you is not quite ready for that first reading that we normally do, unless you want it to be. This is a compilation of, back in, I think, April, we were working on that policy manual review, and we struck some policies, had some comments. And then, when I issued a memorandum for certain recommendations, we had some more comments. So this is a, I guess, marriage or coupling of those things that came together. And this is just agreed-upon rules, they will be, agreed-upon rules about procedural goings-on that aren't necessarily covered by Cushing's.
Absolutely.
And that way, you know, one of the things is about being late, and you don't have to, everyone knows the rules about being late. So they know automatically to start 15 minutes late, for example, if that's the, if that's how it goes. So again, I'm not, I don't even know if this is something that you wanted formally, but I thought, I actually thought of you, Selectman Pacheco, not specifically, but like as a new member coming in, how do they know?
Talk too much?
No! Not at all. But like, how does a new member coming in know what the ground rules are?
Do you read Cushing's manual on day one? I'm just kidding. May I lift that to you?
Well, I tried to read. I read it out loud to my son, and he fell asleep and nope that.
Perfect for in the car, if you're reading it.
Every new parent's best friend.
I did like this. So I don't know what you're gonna add to it, but I did like it. So I'd be interested in looking forward to seeing what you're gonna add to this.
Thank you.
If you're not gonna add anything, can we just do the first reading?
Correct. I just didn't want to...
And then we are gonna modify it anyway. But before we start the first reading, may I? I just wanted to, he's probably not watching. This is to former Selectman Taylor. This is for you. I was really opposed to this when it was presented the first time. What I will say is I have had a change of heart about the rules and procedures because now, being the chairman, I understand how important they truly are, especially when the camera is rolling. And, you know, it's natural for people to talk out of turn. Like, that's just a part of conversation in everyday life. So I am a proponent of this. I think it's great. And I think, not just for us, because I feel like we all know the rules and procedures, and we say this a lot. But this will be good for future boards who may or may not have someone there on the board to sort of show them the ropes. So I appreciate it. And if anybody else has any comments, but we can do the first reading. But may I make another comment?
You're the chair.
We have three, well, I yielded the floor. I took the A.D. the floor. I do wanna say, we have two other policies on here to read. So if it is okay with my colleagues, I will, I'm actually suggesting that we dispense with the reading because there are so many on tonight's agenda. And simply, this is our first reading, but we're not gonna actually read it, and it will be posted, if it's not already, on the website.
It is not already on the website. I wasn't expecting quick action.
This particular document, it pertains to the board. So I don't think it's absolutely imperative that it's not on there at the moment. Mr. Pacheco.
Yeah, no, I think we ought to have one reading of it.
Sure.
Myself.
We can do that.
So the public can see that.
Of course.
And I also agree, according to this, we're not gonna do further readings if we decide we don't need a little further reading.
There's actually a rule about it.
Yes.
So we will skip the readings on...
On the others that we have, yes.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Do you have any objections?
No. No. The only thing I would ask is, we had, when we, because we had some variance in meetings, like this month was, you know, kind of spaced out. If we could just announce the meeting dates for November and December? If we could do that tonight so that people know?
I'm gonna do it right now so we don't forget. It's November 14th and November 28th. So that's the second and fourth Wednesday. So we have, it's actually a couple-week break, and then after Thanksgiving. So 14 and 28. Sorry to do it then. I just didn't want us to forget. That would be the worst thing.
No, no, no. Good point.
No, that's good. Because we get all those holidays, too.
Right. Exactly. Okay. So we're reading this? Here we go. Board of Selectmen, Rules and Procedures to be effective upon approval. First reading. Background. The Town of Dyed and Board of Selectmen abides by Cushing's Manual of Parliamentary Procedure. In some cases, where Cushing's is silent on certain matters that may arise, the Selectmen hereby agree to utilize the following rules and procedures as guidance to act in an effort to maintain a modern approach to governing, increasing efficiency and proficiency. Purpose and applicability. The Board of Selectmen shall operate under specific rules to increase efficiency and professionalism at Board of Selectmen meetings. This policy, coupled with Cushing's manual, the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, and any other applicable law shall govern the Board of Selectmen's operating procedure at meetings. The Board of's Policy. Number one. The Board of Selectmen shall regularly assemble on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month. A schedule of proposed meeting dates shall be released every six months to provide the public adequate notice of meeting dates. Two. The Board shall organize a chairman, a clerk, and a member. Such organizations shall take place at the first regularly scheduled meeting following the annual town election or any other election, which may require a change in organization of the Board. Said meeting shall be called to order by the past chairman, who shall preside as chairman pro tempore until a new chairman is elected. A majority vote shall constitute an election. If there is no immediate past chairman, the senior member in terms of current service shall serve as chairman pro tempore. Nominations for office of chairperson will be made by sitting selectmen and require a second. No selectmen shall serve as chairman for two consecutive years unless unanimously voted by members of the Board. Upon election of a chairman, he or she shall call for the election of a clerk. Number three. Only the chairman has the express authority to call a meeting and shall preserve decorum and order at meetings and shall distinctly put all questions and decide all votes. No persons other than the members of the Board, the Town Administrator, Town Council, or Town Offi... That should say officer or official. I'm gonna say official, sorry. Town official. Shall be allowed to address the Board without first seeking permission from the Chair to speak relative to the matter up for discussion at that time. In the absence of the Chair, the clerk shall resume these duties. The clerk's primary duty shall be to sign any official document requiring a clerk's signature, including the minutes. In the absence of the administrative assistant, the clerk will take the minutes. Any select-- number four. Any selectman who expects to be absent from a regular or special Board meeting shall notify the town administrator a minimum of three hours prior to the meeting time. If an individual selectman gives notice that he or she will be late for the start of any meeting, at the Chair's discretion or by a majority vote, the meeting start will be delayed up to fifteen minutes notwithstanding a scheduled public hearing. Once open, a public hearing may be delayed by majority vote until such member arrives. And I just have to say, you guys are very good at attendance. It's very impressive.
You didn't, man, Selectman Gula and I, for the first two years, didn't even take a vacation. It was like, every week, we were, had weekly meetings at that point. So we're used to it. We're here every week.
But I can take a vacation if I want to.
Of course you can.
On an off week, on an off week. Number five. No selectman shall speak more than once on the same question until all other members desiring to speak thereon shall have done so. There shall be no conversation among the members while another member is speaking, while a roll call is being taken, while any paper is being read, or while a question is being stated by the Chair. Number six. Every item for inclusion on the agenda must be approved by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and submitted in writing to the Board's administrative assistant in accordance with the Board of Selectmen meeting agenda policy. The administrative assistant shall prepare and cause to be printed for the information of the members and the public and agenda. The administrative assistant shall also prepare a meeting packet with supporting documentation for agenda items. The agenda and meeting packet shall be kept together under custody of the administrative assistant as an official record of the meeting. Number seven. The administrative assistant shall take the meeting minutes at all meetings of the Board of Selectmen. Minutes shall be submitted for review at a public meeting. Selectmen shall then vote to approve the minute-- minutes at a subsequent meeting. The meeting minutes shall serve as official record of the meeting. Interested persons may address the selectmen if they appear properly on the agenda or by an invitation of a majority of the selectmen present. Should any person have documentation which they would like to read, a copy of said documentation must be submitted to the administrative assistant for the record. The Order of Business.
I'm administrator. I think under eight, and I'm fine with the language as is, I think we should, that language, to me, makes it sound like someone can't just come to a meeting and participate. I think you should, we should at least add something like, um, interested persons may address the Board after being recognized by the Chairman, just like a general statement. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we have public input, so you've got to let public input come in here.
So, that's in our next section that I haven't read yet, and number nine. But I get, I agree with what you're saying, I'm just reading.
You have to leave the room, the door open, that someone can, because we want people to come to the meetings and tell us how they're thinking.
Yeah, and they might not appear on the agenda.
Correct.
But when you say, is there any public input, and you do it twice a night.
Correct.
So, I'm wondering if we can say, just amend that clause, but, so perhaps the next meeting, we'll just reread this one, because we're changing it.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, that's totally what I was thinking. Selectman, Pacheco, did you have anything? I felt like you were going to say something, okay.
Not at the moment.
I'll edit that. Um, number nine. The Order of Business at every regular meeting of the Board shall be as follows. Call to Order. Pledge of Allegiance. Time scheduled hearings or agenda items. Public Input. Town Administrator's Report. Old Business. New Business. Correspondence. Announcements. Selectmen's Reports. Acknowledgements. Approval of Minutes from Previous Meetings. Approval of Warrants. Public Input to Executive Session/Adjournment. Number ten. A time limit of debate on any issue may be established by the Chair prior to opening the matter up for public discussion. Number eleven. Any meeting, public hearing, or special session of the Board will recess no later than 11:00 PM unless there is a unanimous vote of the Board to extend the time. I know that's been a sticking point, um, so I don't know if you want to keep that in there, or if eleven's a good time, but that's when our alarm goes off, so I figured it's a good one to do. No motion to adjourn shall be in order until the regular order of business is dispensed with, and then said motion to adjourn shall become a privileged motion and shall be non-debatable. To maintain order for the operations, facilities, and property under the jurisdiction of the Board, in the event that an activity of normal occurrence comes before the Board which needs approval before the Board is scheduled to meet, the Chairman shall be authorized to issue an executive order of approval, provided that the subject nature of such activity is communicated immediately to the other selectmen and such action is posted on the agenda for the next available meeting for acknowledgement. These rules may be altered, amended, suspended, or repealed by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen.
I have just one quick suggestion. I think we need to, we also came to some sort of a decision on, for example, and it's minor, and that's probably why it's not on here, like, if someone has a report under Selectmen's report that needs to be given, we decided on a certain amount of time, is there any way we could just put that in here somewhere?
What does that mean, posted on the agenda? You mean?
Yes.
So we do have the...
Unless that falls under the agenda policy.
Yeah, it does fall under the agenda policy, and then Karen and I have worked out a little, a little process that might help a lot.
Then we won't, we won't reinvent the wheel here.
But if you want, if any item that you want to put on the agenda, and you've been very vocal about allowing others to say something, so, um, it just has to be submitted by 12:30 on Monday.
So that's covered under the other one. All right, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. So now here's our section for Protocol for Establishing Policies and Procedures. Number one. Draft policies and procedures shall be placed on the agenda for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board. Upon receipt of said drafts, the more, the Board may choose to discuss the policy immediately or schedule it for a future meeting. Two. When hearing draft employment policies, the Board shall seek the recommendation of the Policy Review Board prior to taking any vote to adopt said policies. Three. Any draft policies or procedures shall be read at least once at a public meeting and made available to the public and town officials for review and comment. The Board shall place the policy on the agenda no fewer than three times before voting to adopt. The Board, by majority vote, may choose to dispense with the reading of the policy in an open meeting, but may not waive the condition of reviewing the policy at three duly posted public meetings.
I like that.
Four. All policies and procedures once voted on shall be maintained in the Selectmen's office and on the town's website.
Beautiful, and thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, can we just go back? I've got a couple of notes here.
Sure.
Uh, number one, where it says, "The Board shall regularly assemble on the fourth Wednesday, second and fourth Wednesday of each month." Would you consider adding, unless otherwise announced in advance?
Yes.
Because we've got to be able to modify that schedule.
So, what we have, actually have, um, language for that on our, on our schedule, so you're right. So, um, I'm just going to add a sentence that say, that says, "Selectmen..."
May modify the schedule.
For conflicts or scheduling.
The main thing is, we want to give advance notice to the public.
Right.
It's not the second and fourth this time because...
Right.
Whether it's holidays or whatever. Under three. Only the Chairman has the express authority to call a meeting. I think the second week that I was on the Board, our Chairman was in the Caribbean, and we had to have an emergency session, and I was the clerk.
So you would assume...
But, the first thing that happened was, we contacted town council, told them the nature of it, and he said, "Schedule, call that emergency meeting now," and we didn't do forty-eight hours, obviously. Okay, so, uh, there needs to be a provision that, in, that, um, it shouldn't say expressly "the Chairman." It's got to say something about, "In an emergency, the clerk."
Well, it says, "In the absence of the Chair, the clerk shall resume these duties," meaning all of the Chairman duties. It's in the same, same item three. It's actually the first full sentence on page two of the policy.
Yep. Yep. I think that's very, yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Okay, not, all right, so, that's all right. If we go to that, it's not resume, it's assume.
It says assume, where are you?
No, she's right. It says resume, but she's right.
The second line. The clerk shall assume.
Got it.
Because, in the case of an emergency, a whole bunch of other rules kick in. We talked about the, the public input thing. Oh, under the Pledge of Allegiance, moment of silence if appropriate, because we always do that, obviously, if we have reason to do it.
We hope we don't, but...
Yeah, unfortunately, we haven't.
Silence if needed, I guess.
Yeah. All right, that's, that's all I have.
Uh, Selectman Pacheco?
Does this address, uh, that if we're going to bring anything before the, um, the Board of, at a Board of Selectmen meeting, and it's a handout, there's something written that has to be presented to the Board members before the meeting, is this...
Uh, no, that doesn't have one. Uh, it just talks about how the administrative assistant will compile a packet of all the documents, but you can add something.
We did take a vote, if I remember, while discussing, regarding that, we don't want to be, you know, other members don't want to be surprised by some written.
So I'm going to stick that in between.
I think that falls under, like, you have to give the administrative assistant the documents within a certain amount of time, is that what you're saying? I guess what I'm saying is, I feel like that's covered under the meeting agenda policy, no? I might be interpreting it not correctly.
I think he's, you're saying that any documentation that you as a selectman may bring before the Board, it is incumbent upon you to provide that documentation ahead of time.
Ahead of time, and we had a discussion on that.
Which should be part of the packet, is that what you're saying, Selectman Pacheco?
It should, it should be, but I just want to, is that clear enough that, so in other words, you would deny, if I suddenly brought him a piece of paper, started discussing as Chair, correctly, you should deny me that right?
And I would do that, not based on this policy, but that should be done based on the agenda policy. That's already on the books.
Not necessarily, though, because I don't think it expressly says that...
Like, like additional documentation.
It doesn't make the condition that if I'm going to bring a piece of paper and show you what I mean, that you have it. So I would do like a six-A or stick it in as number seven here.
Okay.
And, um, I'll just add...
My only concern is that if there is documentation that is being presented, because it's last minute, and you can't bring it up at the meeting, then you're going to have to move it to the next meeting.
So it would be like varied enough, like, say you don't, say you're waiting on a report from somebody, and you don't get, like, this happened to us today, the energy reduction plan we got this morning.
Correct.
Say you're waiting around for that, there's no way that it could have been put into the packet ahead of time for what we do, is we send it to the selectmen on Tuesday nights and they review it. You wouldn't have been able to review that. I sent that to you as soon as I possibly, since I got it, I sent it to you to do it, and we have it tonight for your meeting packet. So it would be broad enough to say something like, um, any documentation that a member brings to the full Board should be provided to the Board in as much advance notice as possible.
As possible. But I don't, but I don't want to have to delay action on...
I know what you're saying.
Agenda items, because something came in at the last minute.
And it's a valid point, because I'm, I'm actually a little happy it happened today, because think about it, if we, if we, like, we got the ERP, the energy reduction plan as early as we could, and it was ready today, we wouldn't have the luxury to delay a vote on the energy reduction plan because the application is due on Friday. So we wouldn't be able to wait till November fourteenth, or whenever it is, for the next meeting.
We had a couple of other things, like grant things, we had to sign by a certain date.
So I think we should give ourselves wiggle room, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, but we still got that, uh, report before the meeting, I'm just saying, I thought we had agreed that the, we would always get something, something in writing we would get before the meeting, so that we can review it before the actual meeting.
Correct. Maybe, maybe the language should be, you can't present new documentation at the actual meeting. And I think that's a way that anything that happens before the meeting is kind of covered.
I'm going to take all of this, and I'm going to formulate a... My note is, "Add something."
Question mark.
Hopefully that makes sense in the morning.
I really think focusing on no one being able to introduce new documents at the actual meeting, I think covers...
If there was no, if there was the ability to provide it ahead of time.
Correct. And, and Mr. Arben from Serpide gave us that energy reduction plan hours before the meeting, so even though I didn't have time to go through it with a fine-tooth comb, I at least had time to take a look at it, and I know what's in it. So no, you know, I'm not like, "What's this? I can't vote on this." That's the whole point. We should all be versed and prepared coming in here. And if you present something at a meeting, I'm not, I didn't have a chance to read it, so...
Well, especially if, you know, like, voila, you know, just like, you know, bring it up.
Right, I'm concerned about that. I want somebody making a copy of something two minutes before the meeting, and at the meeting presenting it. See the, the other Board members.
Selectman Gula?
What's the, I thought Thursday was the cutoff for agenda items.
No, it's Monday at twelve-thirty.
No, it's always been Monday.
What was the Thursday thing?
No, Thursday was if there's a Monday holiday.
Like, if there's a Monday holiday, correct.
That's exactly what that was.
All right, and then, should we have something in here about when it must get to the Board?
Well, that's in the agenda policy. Oh, you mean the, this like additional document? Oh, no, that's in the agenda policy.
That we would send it out the night before.
Yep.
Yep.
That it comes out on Tuesday, um, everything has to be in on Monday, um, our administrative assistant sends us, and thank you for doing such a good job, sends us the agenda on Monday. I send it out to everybody, and everybody's happy, and knows, and we still have an empty press.
Our two ballgames.
We have a town meeting tonight, no one would have come.
Colleagues, regarding the rules and procedures, do we have any additional questions for the town administrator, comments, concerns, anything you'd like to see in it?
Yes, is that all of your notes?
That's all I have.
So I did something bad here, I double-sided. Very confusing.
It's okay, you still have the floor.
Save some paper, okay. So, thank you very much, and, um, that'll be up on the website, once it's edited, and, we'll bring it back here on the fourteenth.
And if you want to send me the language of that, like, emergency document, I'm fine working that out with you.
Great.
Before we put it up.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, okay. The TIF Review Board. So we started this TIF Review Board to kind of help our economic development stuff go on, and really kind of in response to a local business actually asking for a TIF, and the process wasn't very smooth for him. So we had a meeting on Monday, and we, um, unfortunately, had a miscommunication and weren't able to hear the presentation of that business owner. Um, however, we used the time to work on our guidelines and kind of this TIF narrative of how the process would go, and we talked a lot about how to make it worthwhile for the business. Um, we don't want to make it too laborious, um, we have a lot of small business in town, and that's who would be most likely to locate here, um, so we concentrated on how to make it as successful as it can be. So I'd like to thank my other Board members who worked on that with me. Our next meeting is, um, November twenty-sixth, so we tend to meet on the last Monday of the month. This was a odd schedule, because we changed some things around for a conflict, but, um, those are public meetings, if anyone wants to join us, and if you're a local business owner and you have some thoughts, please feel free to share them.
I don't think we've told or emphasized this with the public. Um, part of the reason we started the TIF Review Board, we had, do you remember that meeting we had with, um, Ms. Maria Maresco from the state, and she came down, she did a TIF, um, sort of presentation? Um, I think it's important that people in town understand that we have small business representation on the TIF Review Board. This is not just a Board of, you know, other Board members, or Board of Selectmen members, or anything like that. It really is a Board comprised of people with many different perspectives, but also grounded in a small business, um, business perspective as well, which I think is important when you're talking about TIFs. So I want to thank you, that was your idea, and, um, I think it was also a good idea to include, um, community members and small business members as well in that. Thank you.
And that is my report.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Absolutely.
And moving on to old business, we have the third reading of the Drug-Free Workplace Policy, and I suspect that, since it is the third reading, we're going to vote, we're not going to read it, if that's okay with my colleagues, we've read it once. Before we vote, does anybody have any last-minute comments, questions, concerns, potential changes?
I don't.
No, I have anything.
I don't either, so I...
My only comment, so of course I have a comment, right? I can't stop talking. So my only comment is that upon approval of this policy, it will be dispensed to all the employees, and they'll return this sheet back here that says that they've reviewed it, and that will go into their personnel file.
Love it.
So, can I make a motion then?
Absolutely.
I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this drug-free workplace policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. And thank you very much, I know this is very important.
Yes, well, it's coming just in time, because, um, those storms in March were FEMA-approved, and we'll be getting federal money for our damage sustained, so it's good to have this on the books.
Correct. What I will say, though, is we did have a, we, just so residents understand, the Town of Dayton does have a complete policies and procedures manual. It was not, we did not feel it was specific enough to our town, um, and that's kind of why we're going through and we're revising policies, instituting new policies where we feel it's pertinent and appropriate, um, but more so revamping what we already have, now that we have a town administrator, and sort of making it Dayton-specific, which it always should have been. So, we're not a lawless town, we have policies and procedures and regulations and bylaws and lots of other things, um, but this is definitely necessary, and I appreciate everyone for taking the time to go through, it's not easy. But we, our job here as the Board of Selectmen is to implement policy, um, and that's what we're doing, so we're doing our job. All right. Now that we got that underway, we do have the second reading, so we did one reading of the Town Vehicle Use Policy. We are here tonight with a, uh, sort of revised version based on feedback that we had at our last meeting, um, so first, I want to throw it over to the town administrator, she, so she can speak to any changes, and then we'll throw it over to my colleagues. I know Selectman Pacheco, um, had some issues with it, I also did, and so we'd like to hear if they've been addressed, town administrator.
Okay, so the easy one is item sixteen regarding the mileage reimbursement rate, that's the big change, or one of the changes, about, um, which rate we would use, and it's always going to be the IRS rate in effect. The way the previous, um, draft was written, somebody could have fallen through the cracks if they decided to change mid-year after January, so we changed that. Um, I think Selectman Gula brought that change, so thank you.
Absolutely, and that was one of the things I was going to address.
The major one that we had to reconvene a meeting with the Policy Review Board was about how often an operator would have to provide their driver's license to prove that it was, you know, still stick, uh, instated through the RMV, and there were no issues with it. And we had in here, every three years, there was questions on whether or not that was a little too long, and, uh, we came to two years. Every two years, a driver who drives on behalf of the town, town equipment, would need to provide their status of a license every two years. We also added language, and I think this Policy Review Board, yeah.
Just before we move on, and I forget, I'm getting old now, I forget things. Did the Policy Review Board not want, because I think the concern of the Board, and maybe even the suggestion, I'm not sure if it was the majority, we did not vote, was one year. I believe that's what we spoke about. They weren't keen on that, is that correct?
Well, I wouldn't say they weren't keen on it, I wouldn't use that, um, they just thought it would be kind of laborious, redundant, and we took two years because there are some fire-related things and some highway-related things that require two years, and to cut down on paperwork and management of records for the department heads.
It takes someone time to go, yeah.
Right, so we added that, but we also added a line that makes it that it is incumbent upon the employee that if they, for any reason, do not have a valid driver's license, they need to tell their supervisor. If they don't do that, and it happens to be because they have some sort of abuse problem, they are not only in violation of the Town Vehicle Use Policy, they're in violation of the Drug-Free Workplace Policy. So between these two, we have protections for our equipment if it comes to that, but the two years is also just coinciding with some already established procedures through federal and state regulations.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Selectman Pacheco?
Yes, I just want to thank you for the work you did on, on this compromise. I thought it was a good compromise, we were seeking one year, this said three years, and now it's two years, so I want to thank you and the town employees that, uh, agreed to We were seeking one year. This said three years and now it's two years. So, I want to thank you and the town employees that agreed to it.
Absolutely.
We have a good group on this Policy Review Board. I value them. They feel very open and willing to share their thoughts. And I appreciate it and I know they take their job seriously. And they do go back and report to their respective unions and for Ms. Tavoras, the non-uni, well, we kind of do that together on department head meetings, Jocelyn and I, but still, it's, I'm just really proud of them.
We're proud of everyone.
Yes. Thank you.
Madam Administrator, I felt like you had one other thing you were gonna mention. No?
Nope.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, Selectmen Goulart.
Does... Does the state law about smoking in public buildings carry over automatically into no smoking in town vehicles?
Yes, 'cause that's your workplace.
That was my only thought because...
Do you want that explicitly?
It actually specifically should be stated in here to be, I mean, I would like it stated in here.
What made me think of it was, years ago, I can remember attempting to get into a vehicle to go to a meeting with somebody who's no longer an employee of the town. It was years ago. The person who drove that vehicle most often was a heavy smoker, cigars, you know. And the vehicle literally, we didn't take it. We took another vehicle. I don't know if I, I don't remember if I drove. All I can tell you is that vehicle, it was a pickup truck. Everything was saturated with smoke and even with windows open, it was, a nonsmoker would have difficulty. So, it was just a thought I had because I know we're, we've enforced and we've got the signs about smoking. Just a thought.
No, and I think...
No, I'm just trying to look at the best place to put it in here.
Absolutely, 100% spot-on.
I don't know if it makes sense to stick it with vehicle cleanliness or if it should be a standalone.
You mean like a number?
It just says no smoking.
Smoking in town vehicles.
Like according to state law or whatever.
Right. Because it's considered a work, that's your workplace, right? Like if you drive a fire truck, that's your workplace.
Yep.
So, let me, I'll just stick it in here sometime.
Forbidding people from operating town-owned vehicles under the influence of controlled substances, maybe number nine could be, I don't know. You'll figure that out.
Yeah.
I foresee it as being a standalone, like maybe one sentence, smoking is prohibited in all town vehicles.
And I think...
That was a good catch.
Yeah, it should be added here because in our, we have like a little blurb for smoke-free workplace, but it's sort of over the top right now. So, we'll just add it in here. I'll find it, I'll find an appropriate spot.
Alright.
I think keeping it clean is a good spot. If you can fit it in there somewhere. You talk about...
Vehicle cleanliness, number 11.
And all that.
And you're telling them you better keep the inside clean, so...
There shall be no smoking in town vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
Outta here.
And so, we will do our vote, our third, quote-unquote, "third" reading and vote at our November 14th meeting. So, if you have any final comments, questions, concerns, bring them to the meeting.
Great.
Good work.
Thank you. Alright.
Okay, now.
Oh, okay.
Was that it for the...
That's it for that policy.
So, that was our second reading. Next on the agenda under old business is a letter of non-opposition for a registered marijuana dispensary for One Connection Corp. My colleagues may remember, we actually did a letter of non-opposition for One Connection Corp. I believe this is pertaining to perhaps a change in address. So, I'm gonna let you speak to that, Madam Administrator.
It is a change in address and it's because now we do have a zoning bylaw passed at town meeting, not once, but twice, to allow them to locate where they want to locate. The previous one was, we added some condition that, you know, subject to town meeting approval. So, now we can send an actual letter for them to go, well, they'll take this and they put it as part of their package to go receive the medical dispensary designation that they need through the State Department of Public Health. And they just need to know that everything's all set where they're zoned. And it is now for 200 Williams Street. So, I'm requesting that...
What is the, I apologize. Why do we have to do a letter of non-opposition? I support them and I supported them since the inception when they came in. Why can't we do a letter of support? Why do we have to do a letter of non-opposition? Is this a state template, I guess is my question?
It is, and honestly, I was so concerned about the right address. I mean, I can change it if you want, but it was more like making sure that our language for...
Matches what needs to get accepted.
With what the planning board did and that we're all set, so...
I was thinking along the same lines because when the first letter was drafted, they were not happy with the wording in the letter.
At the bottom.
And it had been reviewed. They wanted us to make a further commitment. And the board, based on advice of council and the status of wherever the committee, not the cannabis committee, that whole thing. And so, the proponents were not happy with us, but...
You couldn't do anything more than that at the time.
Exactly. And so, I just wanted, all I was gonna, to follow up, all I was gonna say is, other than the address change and the comment about the planning board, this is exactly what the other one said, even though they might not have been happy. I'm comfortable with this because we did it before and we can do the next letter at the appropriate time.
I will say...
This is fine. It goes into their...
It looks very standard boilerplate, non-opposition letter. I did do a little bit of research. You guys would be so happy. And I looked at an actual, like, application packet of an RMD that was approved by the state. It was this letter. It was like a standard boilerplate, letter of non-opposition. They don't do letters of support, I guess. But what I want to tell One Connection Corp. is, I do support you. I'm glad you hung in there. Regardless of the address change, you waited for the bylaw to be amended, probably sitting, waiting, wishing at home, hoping it would pass. It did. So, I really appreciate your tenacity and thank you. And I look forward to you opening up in Dayton.
And I'll just, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna make a motion, but...
Oh, before you do, I just want to add that this letter is required for the medical dispensary license from the Department of Public Health. The CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, handles the adult use. This company is looking to do adult use. We are working right now on two host-community agreements for the same company. So, barring anything legal, I might just dump it into one because it's all kind of the same thing. But that is, they're very active and they've been great to work with, very responsive and patient and understanding of how towns go, so. There we go.
In the spirit of communication, before we take a vote, I know we're all ready. I do want my colleagues to know, because I had to email them to find this out, that the Board of Health is about to, I think, about to finalize and vote on their permit regulation. So, there's the state process, right, where you get a permit through the state. And then there's the local permitting process as well. So, they have not gone through that process. The town does retain local control in that process through the Board of Health. I suspect since they bothered to draft regulations that they're going to take that sort of task very seriously. And so, they will still be going through local channels as well before they open up shop. Thank you, Madam Administrator.
And this letter covers both adult use and medical.
This is only necessary for the medical.
Oh.
This letter of non-opposition.
So, if they want to come back, so let's say they open up the medical one and then they want to go to the adult...
Host-community agreement and their, and the license.
So, we don't have to issue another one of these?
Correct. This is just for them to get their permit. It's because it's two different laws. I know this probably sounds silly. It's two different laws.
Okay, it is. And regulations and guidelines and all that.
So, I'll make a motion then for a letter, that we approve a letter of non-opposition for a registered marijuana dispensary for One Connection Corporation at 200 Williams Street in Dayton, Mass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. The ayes have it. The motion passes. And if the public will give us just a moment to sign this, thank you. And I want to also thank our town administrator for working closely with One Connection throughout this process to make sure that this happened. So, everything you've done, and this board has done, to be mindful and proactive about bringing business to town. We really appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was thanking her.
Good work, colleagues. Next on the agenda is a memorandum regarding highway seasonal part-time employment rate. I know we had discussed this and we had sort of, it was, this was like a curve ball. We had sort of discussed the acknowledgement that perhaps the rate wasn't competitive, but, and I will now yield the floor to you.
So, I'm shocked because just the amount you need to pay to wear, like steel-toed boots, like, I'm shocked. But anyway, we did a salary survey for highway, highway laborers, kind of the gamut of those types of positions. And we're right in the middle. So, Tom Ferry and I, we're not advocating to raise this rate. So, the part-time highway department person that comes in, just works a little bit, would be at $14.76 per hour, which is what it was established at. But however, so no change. This has prompted me to kind of take a look at what we're paying our part-time staff in relation to our full-time and the area that we're in, our region, just to see if it's still a competitive rate.
So, essentially, we don't need to act on anything because it'll just stay the same.
This is just an update of what's going on.
But what I would like to say is, to the public, the reason why I was okay with discussing a potential increase is because my understanding is that the part-time person would not be benefited. So, there is like a, in my mind, a little bit of leeway.
There is. There's no clothing allowance. They don't get any of those special stipends, so...
The CBA dictated things. Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns? Alright. Thank you, Madam Administrator. Moving right along. Under new business this evening, we have a vote to sign the warrant for the state election on November 6th, 2018.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Early voting is going on now, lower level. Come visit.
And we are sending those, that early voting schedule out like crazy. So, I know you've gotten it. So, if you've gotten it and you don't want to wait in line on November 6th, early vote. Do we have a copy, copy? Alright. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. The ayes have it and that motion passes. I will also advise the public, because I'm not sure, I thought this was on the agenda, but there are three questions as well on the ballot. So, you might want to hop on to the Secretary of State's website for an explanation of what those questions are. You know, sometimes the legalese can be a little tricky as to what the yes or no that you cast may mean. So, just make sure you're well-versed before you head into the voting booth.
We also have those red books out front in the lobby of Town Hall. You would have been mailed those, but I always find those helpful to explore the yes and the no side. So, those are here.
Just a moment, public.
A lot of controversy on question one, when you hear what's on the news and you see what's on the television and...
Billboard, signs, it's everywhere.
And I feel that every ad I listen to is like a compelling argument. I've already switched. I told you I was gonna vote and I'm like, I switched? I don't know, I gotta read that, that red book.
Gotta study. Next on the agenda under new business is to set the tax classification hearing date.
The assessors have proposed November 14th, so that would be next meeting and...
At our regularly scheduled, oh, yeah, it is at the regulate, okay. Before we take a vote, do either of my colleagues have a further suggestion or is our next regularly scheduled meeting okay for this?
It's okay with me. I think we usually do it at 7:00 o'clock.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask if we start early for it, just because of the nature.
We can totally start early because I will be here by 6:00.
I have information over there.
Sure, Mrs. Brady.
Carol requested 6:45.
That's totally fine.
The district, and then 7:00 for her.
Works for me.
Okay, so...
6:45 PM, district on November 14th, 7:00 PM.
Is it a hearing for each district or one hearing for all, for everybody?
I thought it was 6:45 for all districts and then 7:00 was...
Okay, but they're all separate entities.
I do not, I do not usually.
I'll have to look into that, because I don't know if it's multiple hearings.
They don't take very long. It's just that...
They're short.
I don't remember, I thought they were broken out. The one that, the one that takes the longest, not that it takes long, because nobody really comes except us, is the town's tax rates, the two for the town. But I don't remember the districts being all together. Because the town one, you know, she makes that spreadsheet. It's pretty good size.
And that's when you, you can kind of weigh.
Yes, and we look at how we did it last year and come up with a formula for the town, yeah.
We'll ask her. I've never done a district, so this will be new for me. I've done the split tax rate, but I've never gone through a district one, so...
And we've got the light district and the water district.
So, do we get that spreadsheet before the meeting? Do we get it reviewed or do we get it at that meeting?
They're likely to get it out.
In the past, we got it at the meeting because Carol goes through it and explains it.
She does go like line by line, so...
It's, I gotta tell you, it's confusing because of all the rates.
Your first time, you're gonna be like, what is this? And then you're gonna be a pro at it. I promise.
And it makes sense, like, when you think about it, as she goes through it. Okay, so 6:45.
For the, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna put our agenda together and it's gonna start at 6:45 with the hearing.
Okay.
And you'll, we'll have it listed out here.
Okay. Can we, should we take a vote on the 6:45 hearing? For November. Okay, I'm accepting motions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we set a date for the tax classification hearing. That is to be on November 14th at 6:45. That's 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. The ayes have it. That motion passes. Next, under new business, is an award, to award the bid for radio equipment and dispatch consoles for the new Dayton Police Station Project.
So, in your packets before you, you have all the information that we were given about this, as well as an email from Mr. Dennis McGee saying that, yep, we agree. This is all the radio equipment, the high-tech dispatch stuff that we need for our new station, which I was able to tour, and I know a couple of you were able to tour as well. It's very beautiful. And I think this is certainly gonna be a building that the town can be very proud of. So, well done. And well done to Mr. McGee, who's, I'm now basically floating his name for the school building. He's not gonna like that very much, but he did such a good job, so...
He has done. The whole, the committee has done just an excellent job.
But they'll just be the town's building committee and just go from building to building.
The building committee.
The building committee. So, anyway, there, we just need to vote to award this and they can go forward.
So, this is Comtronics.
Right.
And I need you to correct me if I'm wrong on this, because there's a lot of info, for a final quote of $212,422.55.
Yes.
Okay.
And I will say this is very close to what was budgeted, like within $2,000. So, this is very good and I know that Sergeant Cronin did a lot of back and forth with them. But this is a company that they're, they're very well-known for, what they do, so we're getting a good one.
And because it is over $2,000 for this, in the spirit of transparency, that will be taken from the contingency, which was already approved by the people. So, this isn't gonna cost you any extra money. It is built within. And my other understanding, I feel like you're gonna be mad at me, but the cat's out of the bag. I believe that this project is on time and on budget.
Knock on wood, everybody, wherever you are, yeah.
I hope that's not the kiss of death.
I know.
I know.
So, this money's gonna come out of that contingency fund.
The $2,000.
Just the $2,000?
Just the $2,000, right. Or they're also looking at the furniture budget.
I saw that.
In, because there are some other things going on there where they might see a savings.
Yeah. They don't need gold lamps and gold...
Where did the number come from? Because I'm looking at 158 and this is 212.
So, there are four sheets.
I got, it says five.
Yes, sorry. So, you have, I'm sorry, because I've double-sided this like a fool and I'm having trouble.
Send that paper.
Yeah, I have, I have five pages. Are we just adding the numbers up to get...
But the total, it looks like the five pages total 158. Why are we at 212? There's something missing here.
One of them are missing. Let's see, hold on, let's read his email.
Yeah, I was just about to go back to the email.
Attached are the two final parts, one quote. So, we have the whole quote. Our budget for the supplemental is... I'm actually not sure. I went back and forth because one quote that I saw had an old date on it and I was like, well, wait a minute. Are they gonna hold it? And then they, they provided this one. So, I'll verify that if you want to approve subject to verification. But I double-checked with Dennis McGee and Sean. They both gave their stamp of approval on this.
Okay, so, what I will say, so we don't hold this up, is I'm okay personally with approving it contingent upon, you know, us verifying the accuracy of the number here in the email. I do think that we need to get that figured out.
There's a difference of $54,079.95. Does anybody see a $54,000 total anywhere that might supposed to be added to this?
I'll check my email, because I think... I mean, we have to vote on this. I mean, you can give one of you some authority to...
I think we should vote on it contingent upon researching the true total and also put somewhere in the motion that if, I could be wrong, but if it ends up being less than what is here in the email, then we can re, we can change the amount, essentially, by vote.
Do you happen to have Sergeant Cronin's email address?
Yes.
Because if you sent a quick thing to him tonight, if he got it, maybe he can answer it.
He's probably watching the game.
Okay, hold on, I have it, I have it. So, thank God for iPhones. So, there's another, it's right here. There's another one and it totals $54,079.95. This is the portable radios.
Okay.
Okay. Problem solved. No, I trust you.
So, we add the 54, 079, 95, and we come up with the 212, 422, 55.
And that's my fault, because I didn't print that out and give that to Karen, so I apologize.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we award the bid for radio equipment and dispatch consoles for the Dayton Police Station Project. Two, Comtronics at a total cost of $212,422.55 with the additional $2,422.55 coming out of the contingency fund.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. And thank you to the Police Station Building Committee for all your hard work, we appreciate it very much. One other thing, I will be doing a tour of the facility with Sergeant Cronin this Saturday, and have you gone on it?
Uh, Ken and I went.
Okay, just making sure I didn't leave anyone out of the loop, okay, so just, great, I'm the last one.
Save the best for last.
I'm the one that's been missing out.
But you haven't been on the boat yet.
That's true, I'll get on there sometime.
We got that one up on him, Ken.
Next on the agenda is to confirm the appointment of a new Assistant Activities Instructor for primetime. And so we did get this email, um, from Alice Souzer, Dyton Council on Aging's Executive Director, um, essentially requesting, uh, so this is a vacant position, excuse me. So this was already there, it's part-time, nineteen and a half hours per week, non-union position. So that is what we're voting on tonight. My one concern is that the start date was Wednesday, October tenth, twenty eighteen, so I assume they have not actually started yet.
I hope not, she doesn't have a full appointment, otherwise she's working for free.
Right.
Thank you for your service.
She's been a volunteer the last two weeks. Um, so I am accepting motions pursuant to this request.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, hire Nanette Foote as the Assistant Activities Instructor for, uh, primetime in the Council on Aging. No, just primetime, right?
It says both.
It's both, yeah.
In Council on Aging.
Uh, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. And welcome to Dyton, Ms. Foote.
I just have a very quick question.
Sure, Madam Administrator.
In the future, um, I mean, I think it would be nice to like have her here, and we can meet her. Do we, are, are we in agreement on that, and we can start making that happen?
That's usually what we do, the person is usually present, and we ask them if they wanna say something, we welcome and...
When we have, and we do this always, like, police, fire, highway, they come in and...
Yeah, okay, this is just our second time doing this with the Council on Aging, and they've never...
And we need an audience, let's be honest. Okay.
Yes, you do.
Literally, we'll get one, one way or the other.
Is, uh, is Alice back?
She is back this week.
Oh, welcome back, Alice.
And you know who else is back? Val Wilson, so it's a special week, yes.
The whole gang is back, I love it, I love it.
Fully staffed, finally.
I've missed you all, and I'm glad you're all back. Next on the agenda is to award the Medfield salt bid.
So if you remember, um, when we joined Sursage, salt is one of the categories that we, with this twenty-three community consortium, go out to bid with. And the prices came back very high, they were in the mid-to-upper fifties per ton, which is high. So the highway superintendents of the group, ours included, recommended to, uh, throw out that bid and not award it, and so then we were all kind of on our own. There are two major group bids for salt, one's out of Plymouth, one's out of Medfield, Medfield. And, um, historically, Medfield has been just a little lower, though they're both, um, historically, you know, in the same. Uh, but this is before you to approve, what they got back was, let's see, um, forty-seven dollars and fifty cents a ton for solar salt and CC salt for, for our eastern, eastern minerals. And Morton Salt won the bill, bid for treated salt, and that's seventy-one dollars and seventy-seven cents per ton. We use the CC salt, I believe, mostly. And then we are always allowed to, um, go out a little bit further if we, if we're not, uh, if we're, if we need a little bit more or whatever. But anyway, this is a pretty good deal for us, it's actually ten dollars cheaper than what the Sursage bid came in at, so it's a nice savings. And a little bonus is that Mr. Goulet, the DPW Director, is actually from Dyton originally. Nice to see somebody local-ish.
Absolutely.
I'm just requesting that you vote to approve this bid and award it to Eastern Salts.
I'm accepting motions.
Are we only going to vote on the seventy-one?
Uh, no, you do both, Morton Salt and...
Oh, okay.
And Eastern Minerals.
Two different prices, though.
Yeah.
So, but if we only own, if we only use one, it's still okay? Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we award the bid to Eastern Minerals for CC salt at a bid price of, excuse me, solar salt at a bid price per ton. Now, wait a minute, we got two, we got three kinds of salt.
So it's CC salt and solar salt.
There's three kinds of salt, okay, excuse me, Karen, let me start over, please. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the bid to provide CC salt and solar salt at a price of forty-seven fifty per ton. And to Morton Salt for treated salt at a price of seventy-one seventy-seven per ton, as recommended by the DPW Director for the Town of Medfield.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, a lot of alliteration there.
I was just gonna say, next year, Ken can do it.
Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next on the agenda, uh, is our vote, because our application, um, is due on Friday, October twenty-second, twenty-sixth, excuse me, to Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources for Green Communities designation. Um, this is the energy reduction plan that we received grant funding through a municipal energy, uh, technical assistance grant for Serpide to comprise our energy reduction plan for us, which is a part of the Green Communities program. So we are here tonight to take that vote so that we can include the energy reduction plan with our Green Communities, um, application. Madam Administrator.
So, thank you, um, this is our last step, uh, before we can achieve our Green Communities designation. And while that is, why that is great, it's kind of a two-pronged attack. Not only do we set ourselves up to follow a plan to lower our energy use and thereby our, our money, uh, what we're spending on our electricity bill every month, um, but also to put us in the, the running, I guess, for various grants that are awarded to green communities throughout Massachusetts. And as we get more into this energy efficiency movement, more and more opportunities are available, so... I'm, I've got big plans, so I'm excited.
So...
Lots of ideas.
Exactly, and what you're touching upon is the fact that we will, if our application is viewed favorably, which we think it is, because we worked with representatives from Mass D O E R on the application, we would receive an initial designation grant, uh, to become a green community in January. Um, and then thereafter, we would be eligible for competitive grants. So not grants that are guaranteed, more grants that are based and judged upon the merits of what you've done to improve energy efficiency in the town and what you plan to do going forward, so...
And our DR receiving that train award is really great for that.
Which is why I always said in the beginning that what the schools did to sort of drive it, the town's sort of catching up with that, but it all fits together into one green package, which is great. Um, so, does anyone have any comments, questions, concerns on the energy reduction plan?
It's my understanding that we're going back to twenty sixteen as far as the, what we're using for energy.
Yep.
And we have five years to get to the twenty, to reduce to twenty percent. I think they give us an extra year if we need it. Uh, what happens if we don't make that twenty percent?
They're okay, I mean, that's not what they want, yeah. They're not, they don't want to like advertise that, but you're not married to the plan, it is just a plan, and it's a guide, and you use it to reach these certain benchmarks. We, as a town, have already done things since sixteen to limit, you know, to kind of chalk away that twenty percent. But if you don't get there, you just say, hey, we're not getting there, and they work with you. The point is to save anything and to have this designation and do different things in your community. Because what also comes with this is the stretch energy code, which helps residents have, uh, high energy savings, and then we reduce our footprint altogether, so...
I do think we're going to reach it, when I spoke to Seth initially, which is a good point, like, what if? Obviously, you wanna know what's gonna happen if you don't. Um, but we were under the impression, and again, I have to go through the energy reduction plan with a fine-tooth comb, but that just by virtue of redoing all the lighting in the town buildings, that's already saving, you know, helping us reach the twenty percent. And that was already done last year, so that's within, so we're getting credit for that technically.
And then you get these grant funds to actually do it. So one thing that, um, the building commissioner and I are looking at are actually windows. Insulate, and some of the seals are broken downstairs, which I think you are aware of. So we were looking at that, and that's a way to reduce it as well, and you get the funding to make those changes.
You've actually just, my mind is working. So, do you remember from the finance committee meeting where they sort of had the suggestion, which I think is spot-on, and I know we're doing that this budget season, for each department to give kind of their five, um...
Year plan.
Yeah, five-year plan, or like their wish list of five things that they really need. I think that's something, I think, you know, maybe we just put it under the umbrella of renovating or improving Town Hall, but I think that's something that I would get behind. Um, better insulated windows, I'm, I'm with it. So that's something I want, my colleagues, and I will also think about Town Administrator Aaronstein. Um, let's all make a list of five things, and then let's have it out at a meeting, and, you know, so we have something to give to the finance committee about what we need. We know, we already know we're gonna redo the space in here, because there's room, and some departments moved to Old Town Hall, so...
Yeah.
I just want that to be on our radar for upcoming meetings, and, and I say that because we only have bi-weekly, I mean, really, twice a month.
Twice a month.
So, we need to do that soon.
Uh, at a department head meeting, I had asked, uh, the department heads to generate kind of a wish list, pie, from, from pie in the sky to very practical of what they wanted in their departments for the next five years. Um, and I know that some could rattle that off very quickly and others, but it's due in December. Do you want to wait to see that feedback? Do you want us to develop our own? Cause my idea, the thought behind this, is I feel that some departments are gonna have the same. In, or something similar that would benefit. I'm very interested to see theirs.
Because once we see theirs, we might say, oh yeah, well, that was, I had that one on mine. They may come up with some we never thought of, but I think we may also be able to come up with some that... Departments are gonna focus on their department, we have to look at across the board the whole town. So we may come up with some.
But, but would you say renovate the building to, because we have a space problem? I'm sure that the town clerk is thinking, well, I'd like to renovate my office to add, you know, such-and-such for ballots that can be locked better, or something like that.
And I, I use the word renovate.
No, I, I know, at least.
I, I really mean, we're going to reallocate space, I'm not talking about painting the walls. Exactly, I'm not talking about tearing up the carpeting. The carpeting needs to be on our list, though.
Well, the carpeting's on my list.
Yeah.
It's original, I think so, it's...
Not everything needs to be original.
The building, the interior did get painted, uh, the Sheriff's Department provided the labor for that a few years ago. Um, I'm guessing two thousand fourteen, um, that they were here, excuse me, but it's true. It, the original building that we are in is, other than a new roof, which was when I came on in two thousand seven, certainly, windows need to be looked at, uh, because the glass now is, you have the, you know, the R ratings and all that.
Although skylights are, I'm starting to make...
Our, um, ADA committee, uh, has talked about things that need to be done to the building to bring it up to code. And we've got all those, that glass work out front, and obviously, we get the glass do it down back, and I don't know what those are rated at either, but that's probably gonna be coming, you know, just to bring it up to, to code.
I agree with you, Selena Goulart, hundred percent. So, let's get that on our radar.
So the consensus is to wait to see what we get from them, and then compile our...
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Um, and then it sends the message, we know there's a space crunch, let's hear what the employees have to say. Selectmen Pacheco.
So I wanna make a motion that we accept the Town of Dyton's energy reduction plan.
And also authorize me to sign this.
And authorize the chairman to sign the letter.
Um, I'll second it, yeah, cause we know the selectmen.
Um, Mrs. Brady, before we take a vote on this, the original signature page you gave us had three lines, and then the one that you presented tonight is just for me. So is the one just for me sufficient for the application? Or does it need to be Selectmen Pacheco and Selectmen Goulart as well?
I think it's just that one, but I'm not positive about that.
No, it can be you as the chairman, because all we're saying is that this is the date, the real action is the vote.
And Dr. Azar is gonna sign the one for the schools, so I think if he can, then it's fine, okay.
This is just proving to Mass D O E R that, yep, we took our vote, we accepted it, and this is the date. And then if they need more, we can always provide them the minutes or whatever that they need.
Does the language for the schools, I'm sorry, I know we need to take a vote. Does the language, the one that Dr. Azar is gonna get, does that say the school committee voted to adopt the attachment? Because they're not gonna have a meeting before that.
No, but he can, as superintendent, he has the ability to implement that. Nope, I didn't.
We're on deadlines here.
We're like, well, cause we're so close, you don't wanna mess up for formality. But Eric said, worst case, we submit it, we get in the queue, and if they need more, they'll ask for it.
Okay, and that's fine, that's fine with me. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. I would be remiss if we moved on and I did not thank our invaluable Town Administrator and Administrative Assistant for fielding the endless phone calls from Serpide, fielding the different things that needed to be shuffled and moved around in order to make this happen. I appreciate it, I know the Green Communities Committee appreciates it. This is a two-year labor of love, and it would not be possible without the two of you and my colleagues to my left and my right. So thank you all very much.
Uh, we should give a shout-out to the person that helped us at, um, Serpide.
Eric Arbeni.
Eric Arbeni, amazing.
And Seth.
Eric, Seth.
Seth and Eric, who, uh, I call up as like a crazy person. Are you sure we're okay? He's good, but no, uh, seriously, a lot of thanks to Karen, thanks to Karen, because she did yeoman's work on this project.
Thank you, so much, takes the village, that's what they say. All right.
Moving on, great, so we need that, we will scan that over to Eric, and that has to go as part of our application, which he will be submitting on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
I think this is the first project out of Serpide that Bill Napolitanos has ever...
His spirit is there, though, cause I'm sure he agrees with it. Next on the agenda is an agreement for the Veterans Agent between the Dyton Board of Selectmen and the Berkeley Board of Selectmen. And this is just an update to the original agreement, a renewal of the agreement, excuse me, stating that the Town of Berkeley will forward to our town, because our Veterans Agent also works part-time in the Town of Berkeley, a sum of one thousand, one hundred dollars for expenses, and three thousand, one hundred dollars for the secretary's salary, so that would be, um, Mrs. Pinto.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we, uh, sign the agreement with the Town of Berkeley, that they would pay eleven hundred dollars towards expenses, and thirty-one hundred dollars for the secretary's salary for our shared veteran services.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I have a question, just how these figures are derived.
I'm gonna actually throw that to Selectmen, uh, Selectmen Goulart, because my understanding was, and I know this is sort of the Dyton way, and we all hate it, but this is the way it always was. And I know, I know there's a reason, so Selectmen Goulart.
I believe it's based on the caseload.
Oh, okay, so number of, is a...
Yes, and obviously, his caseload in this town, our town, is higher, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, I, I almost just copied you. Can we use yours? The ayes have that, that motion passes.
I just had a thought, we have a, we also have an agreement with the Town of Berkeley on the shared expenses for the bridge.
Oh.
No, the cars, he doesn't use the car in Berkeley, no, the car, no. This is different. When, um, prior to the opening, I should say, I guess, Berkeley and Dyton reached an agreement on how we would share the cost for electricity for the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge. I don't know if we did that as an annual thing or not, it is just, just a note to say, we need to look at that agreement and see if it had any timeline in it, and needs to be renewed, or if it's open-ended, that's fine, it's bas... It's based on the number of light poles in each town.
Okay.
You can look into that.
We bill it out, but please put that.
Oh.
Oh, no, you bill it out, but I'm talking about the original agreement. We voted to follow this procedure based on poles, light poles, actual lamps. And that's another thing, if you cross that bridge, if you're going slow enough, you can see the boundary line, and it's angled, and that's how we determine what light poles were in which community. And I know it's a percentage, and as Karen said, we pay the bill and get reimbursed, all right? But my only concern is, was it a permanent agreement henceforth?
She just wants to know what the status is.
Or did we have a timeline in there, and we should renew it again?
Yeah, and based on that, we might need to do something.
That's my only thought.
All right. So we'll have an update at a, you know, a future date on that, future meeting, excuse me. Next, under New Business, is a request by the Emergency Preparedness Committee to dispose of unused equipment. We did get a letter from the Board of Health, actually, based on a Emergency Preparedness Committee vote back in May, to dispose of the old army cots that are stored under the stage at the Dayton Middle School, which is used as an emergency shelter, and to order new ones, which they voted on at October 10, 2018 meeting. So I am entertaining motions pursuant to their memorandum. Pursuant, who says that?
You do.
You.
Reading MGL, Mass General Laws too much.
I'll make a motion that we approve the disposal of the old army cots stored under the stage at the middle school during the, that was approved on May 3, and that the, we also allowed them to purchase new army cots, that was approved at their meeting on October 10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would say is, from what I remember, they said those cots were so old that the canvas, like deteriorated, they don't have salvage value, you couldn't take them and put them in a camp. Yeah, kaput.
It felt like you were going to fall through if you sat on it.
Which is not what you want to feel like in an emergency, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just wanted to thank the Emergency Preparedness Committee for getting up and running so quick, and for acting on really important things like this. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next on the agenda, under New Business, is to appoint Jonathan Gale to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is really exciting. And this is after we received the official recommendation from the Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals to recommend Mr. Gale for appointment. And I will also note that Mr. Gale is quite invaluable to the town. He wears many different hats. He is our American Disabilities Act Officer, and he's just a wealth of knowledge. Anybody who discusses anything with him will gather that very quickly. So I am entertaining motions on his recommendation for appointment.
I'll make a motion, but I also want to note that he's on the Affordable Housing Committee, and we both attended a meeting this past Monday, and he's very knowledgeable in that field. So I want to make a motion that we appoint, excuse me, appoint Jonathan Gale to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next on the agenda is to appoint Mr. Timothy Rhines as a full member of the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board. Mr., just brief synopsis, Mr. Rhines was an alternate member. When Mr. Pacheco, who was representing the Zoning Board of Appeals at that time, was elected to the Board of Selectmen, he resigned from the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board, so we're technically filling the Zoning Board of Appeals' membership vacancy here.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Timothy Rhines as a full member of the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next on the agenda is to appoint Mr. Kevin Bernardo to the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board meeting, cannabis history for the evening. Mr. Tanis, who was the Board of Health Representative, recently resigned from the board, so we felt it important to have a Board of Health, especially when they're drafting like the permit regulations, to have that continuity between the town and cannabis policy, and the Health Department, essentially, to have Mr. Bernardo on that board. So that is the explanation.
I'll make a motion that Kevin Bernardo be appointed to the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next on the agenda is to appoint Kim Gale to, excuse me, is to appoint, we can do them together, to appoint both Kim Gale and Mr. Jeffrey Carvalho to the Dayton Trails Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we appoint Kim Gale and Jeffrey Carvalho to the Dayton Trails Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Is that board?
I was just going to say, there's one spot left.
One more.
So we've got four.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Which is better than one. We'll find a fifth member. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Before we move on, I want to thank everybody who was appointed this evening, and in the past, who continue to serve our town honorably, often without remuneration. It is, a lot of these are volunteer positions, and we just, it really means a lot. I see a lot of new names on here, which is exciting. People are really trying to get involved here, because they know that they can make a difference if they do, which is great. So thank you, everyone, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We do have two pieces of correspondence. I know we're not really reading correspondence, because it is included in the agenda packet, which everybody can view, it's online. One of these was a request, and I do feel like we should mention this explicitly, from the Dayton Daisy/Brownie Troop, number 82230. They will be setting up collection boxes in Town Hall, one under the Crayon Initiative, and again, more information on that program is in our packet. And then they also are doing Books Are Wings, which is a nonprofit organization that collects gently-used and/or new children's books. Ooh, I have some old Disney ones, you know, like Lion King, Bambi, all that. Not sure I want to give them up yet. But those will be used to distribute to children who may otherwise not have access to books. Get those kids to Dayton Public Library. And the Crayon Initiative is an organization that collects used and broken crayons, oh, I had a lot of those as a kid, and melts them down to make new crayons for distribution to children's hospitals across the country, which I think is absolutely fantastic. You're getting kids, especially our Daisies, fantastic group of kids, Brownies, same thing, involved in admirable nonprofit organizations like that at a young age, I think that's fantastic.
I'll make a motion then, that Dayton Daisy Brownie Troop, 82230, allows to set up collection boxes in Town Hall.
A second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I just wanted to let you know that they will be checking them periodically, just so they don't get overflowed. So she thinks about once a week, but she'll be there to make sure they're neat and organized. And thank you for the Girl Scouts for this project, very good. And I have to apologize for Jen Morrow, because I'm looking at the bottom of this email, and she asked me a question. I'm sorry, I didn't see that, I was so excited to get this into the packet, so, no, you don't need to be here, we'll do it anyway. Thank you.
Before we move on to the other piece of correspondence, which I will read in full, it's very short, I do want to ask the Daisy Brownie Troops Eagle Scouts, when you have a Court of Honor, when you have a bridging ceremony, I love those ceremonies, they make being a selectman fun, if that's even possible. I would love it if you invited us, I know I'll attend if I'm available, I suspect my colleagues will as well. We love those events, so please think of us. I'm happy to be there and support everyone, and I know my colleagues are as well. All right. Next, under the agenda, under correspondence, we did receive a letter from...
Did we vote on that?
No, I...
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. We have a motion and a second, thank you, Selectman Goulart. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. We did receive a letter from school committee member Christopher Andrade, and I will read the letter in total, dated October 22, 2018. Dear Mr. Zagrafos, this has been my honor and privilege to serve as elected school committee member to the Dayton Rahoboth Regional School District for the past six and a half years. As you know, members of the school committee serve without pay and work many hours, participating in community meetings, along with assignments to various subcommittee meetings, negotiation sessions, regional agreement discussions, and of course, the superintendent's evaluation. Currently, I'm no longer able to dedicate the time and energy necessary to fully participate in these activities. The importance of this position requires that school committee members be passionate about and able to participate fully in all of these activities. Going forward, I will need to expend all my time and energy to my family responsibilities and my full-time job. Therefore, I would ask that you accept my resignation from the Dayton Rahoboth Regional School District Committee, effective on Wednesday, October 24, 2018. As you know, Section 1C of the 1987 Regional Agreement allows for the Board of Selectmen and remaining Dayton members of the school committee to meet within 30 days, to appoint a member to serve until the next election, which would be in April, at which time a successor shall be elected to serve for the balance of the unexpired term. So there would be essentially two positions available in April, coming up in 2019. I wish you well in selecting an appropriate, passionate, and capable successor. Thank you, Christopher Andrade. Before we vote on accepting this, two things, we should reach out to the school committee to discuss this and get it on an agenda, because they only meet twice a month as well. And the other thing is, I just wanted to thank Mr. Andrade for years of unpaid, dedicated, selfless work. I will certainly miss you on that committee. I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, I supported you, both electorally, but also just in your everyday capacity, being able to do the job and to do it well. You're a wealth of knowledge. Please forgive me if I still call you for advice on matters pertaining to the schools, and I just can't thank you enough for all that you've done, and I really will miss you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept with regret and thanks the resignation of Christopher Andrade from the DI School Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Wait, if we don't approve this, does he have to stay? No, I'm just kidding. We have a motion and a second discussion.
I just want to say, Chris, I was surprised to see your resignation. We go back quite a few years, because you, I first met you on the Dayton Finance Committee, and you served on the Finance Committee for a number of years before you ran for school committee, and were very effective and very participative in our discussions. And I think you brought a lot to the Finance Committee, and I do wish you well, I enjoyed working with you, so best of luck to you.
Chris, I just want to wish you luck in your endeavors in the future, and appreciate all the work you've done for the Town of Dayton and School Department. Thank you.
Fierce advocate, hashtag, that's what I would say about Mr. Andrade, good man. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
So for clarification, how does this work? Are we seeking?
So we're going to reach, yes, if you're interested, submit a letter to the, it's easier if it's one place, so just send it here to the Board of Selectmen, we'll put them in a pile, and you can either decide to have them all in and ask some questions at your joint meeting with the school committee, or, you know, if you happen to know them, we'll go that way. So my plan is, I'm going to reach out to the school committee to determine which dates work for them, and then we'll schedule it.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Minister.
Absolutely.
All right. Next, we have some announcements. Early voting is being held in the Town of Dayton, lower-level Town Hall during the weeks of October 22 and October 29, 2018, for the November 6 state election. Early voting will take place in the lower level of Town Hall during the hours of 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. A free breakfast for Dayton veterans will be held at West Dayton Congregational Church, 2767 Horton Street, Dayton Mass, at 9 a.m. on Saturday, November 10, 2018. Colleagues, everybody, remember to RSVP. A pumpkin...
I just wrote that, I just wrote RSVP.
Transference. A pumpkin painting party hosted by Parks and Recreation will be held on October 27, 2018, from 12 p.m. to 4 p.m. at the Pavilion behind Town Hall. Please bring a non-perishable food item for the Dayton Lions Food Bank. Volunteers needed for this event. I do have a couple of meetings on Saturday, but I did participate in this last year with Heidi and Mr. Rhines. I do suspect that I will be there again, and it was really cool.
I'm going to bring my kids.
Yes.
And when you say you participated, you...
Well, they didn't let me paint, because I'm not skilled enough. I don't want to be out-painted by a young child, but no, it was really fun, and it honestly got me in like the Halloween, you know, it's tough as you get older to get into Halloween, I'm still attached to Hocus Pocus.
You can come trick-or-treating at my house.
I'll be there.
I'll give you something.
The lure of free candy. Probably put me to work in the yard.
That's a thought. Hey, I got three yards of loom delivered today.
I can help you with that. Are you going to pay prevailing wage?
You're going to get chocolate.
Okay, I'll accept that. Next, under Selectmen's reports...
I have an announcement, and I have a presentation. Ta-da.
I feel like I know what this is.
Yeah, well, on Sunday, November 4, from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m., the Lions will hold their annual Arts Festival at Arugio Farms.
Oh, can we get that on the agenda?
The Dayton Stormwater Committee will have a table there as part of our ongoing stormwater education program. And as a result of the grant that we got this year, we acquired new bags. I showed you the green ones early this year. These are the new bags, and these are the nice shopping bags with the big expandable bottom, and new grippers. These are a little heavier than the last ones, and they both now have the town seal. I got permission from the town clerk to use the town seal, so we're legal. And I have one for each of you.
Oh.
But I didn't tell you Cam, that was early.
That's okay.
Thank you, I like these guys, thank you.
Everyone raised about the grippers, so that's my plug, come to the Arts Festival.
Be the solution to stormwater pollution.
We will be handing these out to all of our visitors, and we were able to acquire, with our grant, we got a supply of these, and we got the grippers, so we're very happy. Our grant was $2,000, and we spent it all.
Well, I will say, it's not an Hermes Birkin bag, but I'll find a use for it.
Well, it's better than the other ones, the other ones were shot notice.
No, I agree, no, these are nice.
And again, I give recognition and credit to the Stormwater Committee, we're meeting tomorrow morning, but this all went very well, and thanks, Roz, for your help with this.
Thank you, Roz. We miss you, Mrs. Grassi. She's over in the Old Town Hall now, we don't see her enough. Well, thank you all for your work, and thank you to the Stormwater Committee for all that you do, it's appreciated. Next, under Selectmen's reports, we have a report from Selectman Goulart regarding the MMA Legislative Meeting on October 19, and the MMA Selectmen's Meeting on October 20. You had a busy week.
Both of those meetings, I had to be there at 8 o'clock. The first one was Westport, that wasn't bad. The one at Devens, that's a haul. And I couldn't take the train, I used to take the train to Fort Devens, that didn't work on Saturday. So the first one I'll talk about is the legislative, the MMA Legislative Breakfast that was held on October 19. It was at the new Westport Police Station that opened up July of this year, and quite frankly, it looks like ours, it's Tecton, is the architect, it's gray with the white trim.
The police station, Tecton?
Yes, yes, as I said, this looks like ours, now theirs is built right next to their fire station, which is also new, a few years, but it's gray with the white trim, it's very nice. And I think the flooring and things I was looking at were what Sean said's going to be in ours. We met in the community room... We met in the community room, nice big room, bright and airy, but it was, that was very nice. John Robertson did the presentation, and we had one senator and we had, I believe, five reps from there. And I was very surprised, I didn't see her come in, but Representative Hadad came in. She couldn't stay till the end because she's still going for therapy for her surgery.
Hope you're feeling better.
But she looked good, and they were discussing the supplemental budget that passed, and there will be some extra money in that budget to address a number of issues that we've read about in the paper. But the good news was, she made an announcement that said, that budget isn't final. There's going to be one more addition, and there will be some extra money. Because there were a couple of complaints, well, we didn't get this, or we didn't get that, and she did speak up and say, it's not, it isn't final. There will be one more iteration coming out. So they talked about that. They talked about how money has been put into the state stabilization account because the projected revenues actually came in much higher. Now, about, I don't know, seven, eight months ago, they were concerned, seven, eight months before the end of the year, they were concerned they weren't gonna hit their target, and what are we gonna do? But at the end.
Based on the previous year.
At the end, money came in.
Nice.
They were talking about the new revenues that will be, that they're getting from the MGM Casino in Springfield. And next year, they expect the casino in Everett to be up and running. And so, so those were the kind of things they were talking about. MMA is going to file, some of the bills we had last year, which I mentioned before, because there, some of them are coming out of our Energy Committee, are bills that, that were really there but didn't actually make the vote, or the governor got them and then the time expired, so they didn't go anywhere. They'll be going again. They talked about the housing plan. MMA was happy that they were able to still have local control because they wanted to have the zoning laws changed so that the state could, you know. MMA fought against that. The vote did change from a two-thirds to a majority vote, but the major controls for the local communities, as far as zoning goes, will still be in effect, you know, but.
And it's still on a local level, a two-thirds?
No, no, the two, the vote, it's a majority vote now. But the concern was, the proponents of this, the builders and everyone's, really wanted to take the power away from the communities regarding zoning. And that part MMA really fought against. And so, I guess it was a compromise. That was protected, so the communities still have the say. But the vote went from a two-thirds majority to a majority. So, so that was the legislative meeting. The Selectmen's Meeting that was the next day, Saturday, that was held at Devens, and there was a very good turnout there. The president of the Selectmen's Association is actually from the town of Mount Washington, and I think they're the second smallest town in the state. They have 150 population, behind Bosnol.
150?
Yes.
My goodness.
And they don't have a police department because they rely on the state police. They talked about shared services. They had a panel of Selectmen from various places. Ellen was there from Norwell.
Oh, really?
And I told her about Chief Noid helping us. And there were a lot of questions. The people in the western part of the state were looking for assistance, and they're trying to regionalize as much as they can because they're kind of out there.
Yeah.
And a lot of the things that go on in the state, it's like, they're in Timbuktu. Mount Washington just got internet service.
Do you remember that meeting we went to?
Yes.
Begging for Wi-Fi.
I know it.
And they fought and fought because the people in the town were saying, we can't sell property. Nobody wants to come to a place that doesn't have internet. So they actually got their own internet, I think second behind Leverett. And so everyone was really happy because now they feel like they're, they're a player. They're in, they're connected to civilization. But they talked about having regional services. They talked about a shortage of town accountants and how nobody's turning out town accountants, and how difficult it is to hire town accountants. There was one lady that said she drove two hours to get there, so she was in a community near Mount Washington, and I don't think she understands what a town accountant does. She says, I'm, I'm looking for somebody one day a week to pay bills. And I'm thinking, you need an accountable clerk, not accountant. But they were talking about the cost, even if you can find a town accountant, they were talking about costs. Some communities said that they had hired former mayors to be town administrators. Mansfield wasn't there, but that was the town I was thinking of. I know they hired a mayor. Some of the things that they talked about that will be coming up, of course, they pushed the annual meeting, so if you haven't registered yet, Ken, this will be something you want to look into, if you, even if you just go for the Friday session. That's usually what we go for, is the Friday session, and it's well worth going to. And there's a lot of good workshops that are coming up. So, this was one of the things that I wanted to, to bring up. The speaker at the end of the day was the Lieutenant Governor, Karen Polito, and she talked about a lot of programs, the weed-whack bill, but she talked about the CCC program. They are now in the second round of funding. And I kept thinking about, we had three best practices that we got funded, and the Agricultural Commission is up and running, so that one's behind us. The open space, we continue to look for open space. The last open space we acquired was the Council Oak, two properties.
They're still, and they're still working on that plan to tie in for the maximum.
Right, right, and.
Stormwater.
Stormwater is, it's never gonna go away. It's, you know, we got a Stormwater Committee, we're continuing to build on our education program. But I was thinking, if we can, if we can come up with some more, one, two, or three, but at least one I thought of that we might want to consider as a board, is to put together a best practice proposal to get that GIS mapping for the Cemetery Commission done because it's 35,000, and it wasn't, it wasn't turned down. It was delayed until our town meeting, but if we can get grant money, even to fund part of that, it would be good. And again, my thought was, you're on the Cemetery Commission. I did run this by Tom Ferry. He says, if, if there's support for this on the board, I think it's a good shot that we try it as a best practice, and that something we put together. Remember how each one of us had to write something? And submit it? Because she said, as of Saturday's meeting, they had given out $77,000 in grant money for various things. And I'm, I'm thinking to myself, I'll bet no one submitted anything but GIS for the cemetery mapping. That'd be a good one.
Well, do you have to finish all of your compacts before starting for the next one?
No.
Or they're?
No, because.
And we have a good effort because we did do Rights of Farm and AdCon.
Right. Oh, no, we've done.
You know, they're not giving money to, you know, they're not throwing money in the wind.
I don't know how many got multiple grants. Three was the max, and that's what we did. So as I say, Stormwater will be ongoing. We'll, we'll never get out from under that. And I'm gonna look to see if there's any other way I can get funding for further, I got some ideas to expand the education program. I want to see if there's any other money out there. But when I was thinking of this, I thought, again, acquisition of open space, that's ongoing, but it's not something we're doing all the time.
Correct. And it's not something we're, we're doing.
No, when the opportunity arises, we can look at it and say, is this something we should consider? But I'm thinking this GIS mapping of the cemetery thing might be something worth going after.
I agree.
And so, just, just, you know, if, you know, you're on that commission and.
Yeah, the Finance Committee also decided that they're gonna notify the other board to see if they could benefit also from a GIS mapping.
I was just gonna say, like, can it just be GIS mapping?
Well, what?
As a whole?
The whole thing, Tommy mentioned that, Mr. Ferry mentioned that. And what I said to him was, we will never get a grant big enough to do it all. That's why I'm thinking, if we propose GIS mapping of the cemetery as a layer, that then you layer the other ones on top of. And as the town funds the other ones, the whole thing is gonna come together. But since she was talking about, it's, we're in the second round, and we got all this money available, and I'm thinking, we gotta come up with something here. Because we were successful, we got all three of them approved, and we got some kind of money.
And we're, you know, we have stuff to show on all of them.
Exactly, exactly. So it's just a thought.
I agree.
But Mr. Ferry said that if the board supported it, he thought it would be a good idea, and to do it in layers or tiers. And even if we don't get 35,000, whatever we get will defray the cost when we go to town meeting. And town meeting, instead of asking them for 35, we can say, we actually got approval through CCC, and this is, this is the balance we need.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So anyhow, so that, that, the other things they talked about was the housing initiative to attract investment from private sources. But as I said, it was very well attended. The meeting went until 1:30. That's when the Lieutenant Governor finished up. And they talked about social media policies, business management, municipal management, best practices for small towns. And we had a good variety, so we went from 150 residents to the, the city slash former town of Framingham, the biggie. So it was, it was really good.
Thank you. That brings up a good point. Now that we've done a lot of these other really urgent policies, I do think we should start, especially since Karen has a new computer, and now that computer needs to be, the old desktop needs to be repurposed. We do need to think about a computer use policy before we even think about putting that computer out there for people to use. Okay, moving on to acknowledge, right, there's not like anything that important, but just something we should think about going forward. Acknowledgements. We have an acknowledgement of an anonymous donation, the amount of $30, to Primetime.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we acknowledge the anonymous donation of $30 to Primetime.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. Meeting minutes, we have to approve the minutes from September 26, 2018, and to accept for review the minutes of our October 3, 2018, meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 26, 2018.
I don't have that in my package. Do you guys?
Right here. Oh, no, yeah, we already had these last week.
We got that the last meeting.
When we accept and review, that's when you have them.
All right. I don't know who made changes. I recommended some changes. I don't know what actually ended up.
Usually it's just you and I that.
I didn't make any.
Make the changes.
Well, one of the things you had said was, we needed to summarize discussion instead of doing it all.
Yes, and I saw yours, and then I like color-coded for Karen.
So my only thought was, if we're gonna do that from now, as I said to Karen, if we're gonna do that, I don't object to it, but I had written stuff, and I said, if we're gonna use this, I just want, obviously, the board to know, and I can mail you, email the, the stuff, so she doesn't have to retype it.
Okay, so I am accepting motions regarding the minutes.
I made a motion. I'll stay with that motion.
Okay, I'm gonna second the motion, so for discussion purposes, but I'm going to abstain from the vote because I haven't had a chance to read this.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Wait a minute, oh, this is the same one?
I think that's the chairman's copy. I think he's just got it kind of next to you.
All those in favor, well, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye. Is this my copy, or is, I, because I don't have a copy of the final one.
You can keep that one.
Oh, all right, okay.
That motion passes. Okay, next, we have approval of the warrants.
No, we got another set of minutes.
October 3.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did those together. Okay, accepting motions on the October 3 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept for review the minutes of the Selectmen's Regular Meeting of October 3, 2018.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. Did I say dissensions? There were none. We were unanimous. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move.
There's a lot.
Oh, okay, I was, I was just thinking, yeah, okay. I'm trying to remember all the ones I said. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant 14A-19 in the amount of $89,290.16 payroll. Warrant 14B-19 in the amount of $794,689.34. And warrant 14C-19 in the amount of $168.84. The last two being accounts payable, be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes.
I missed, oh, sorry.
That's okay. I'll make a motion that we, we approve the warrant number 16A-19 in the amount of $105,304.45.
Excuse me, just a minute. Where's 15?
There is no 15.
Oh, there has to be. It's a week.
Well, October 3 was 14, and October 10 was 16, so I think the accountant might have mixed.
No, 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 that's, that code is very important. It's the 15th week of the budget year. That's what, that's why I said, when I looked at it, is, is 14 correct, Karen, or did we do 14 on a previous meeting? And this is 15, 16?
I'm not sure now. The ones that I jotted down for you that.
Oh, that's 17. Yeah, that's 17.
That's 17.
The, the number, the first number, 14.
Well, second, I might be missing, um.
There were a lot of them because of the time period involved.
Well, there's none for October 17, right?
I might be missing October 17.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Okay. All right, but if we're missing 17, then it's 10, 15.
I get what you're asking.
And 17, October 17 is 16.
I'm not sure.
That's the only way this would make sense.
Yes.
That, that, the week of the 24th is 17.
I would have to pull them off that, I guess.
Is the question, the dates of the warrant?
Yeah, where is 15?
The number, not the date, the numbering sequence, because.
We suspect that October 10 is 15.
And then October 17 is 16.
17, which we don't have, should be 16.
Because I've got 17 right here.
That's the only thing that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, so we're missing week 15.
October looks like 17.
No, we're missing 16.
No, 15.
Yeah, missing here, but really, we think October 10 is.
See, we don't. Do you need the date in it, though, because you have the week?
No, no.
We need the number, though.
The, the date is not the problem. We know that 17 is missing, but when you look at the numbers, like 14A.
Yes.
14 is the 14th week of the FY19. So what we're looking for, for October the 10th, is the warrant that is 15AB whatever, and the dollars amount.
Ken's just gonna look.
Well, my question is, why do we need to know?
I'm actually checking the score of the Red Sox priorities.
Because if you just made the motion based upon the weeks, we can add it to the next one. one. I know that's delayed, but.
We don't know the dollars. We don't know the dollars.
I'm not asking you to do a blanket one for week 15. I'm just saying, do these ones, and then we can do week 15 at a later date.
Probably, based on the numbering sequence, we can do October 3 and October 24 because we need to know 10 and 17 because we're missing numbers and we're missing dollar amounts. So, those would be the ones that we've got to do. I mean, they've already been, they've already been signed and all that, so we need October 10, which would, we believe, would be warrant 15AB whatever, and the dollars, and we need October 17, which we think is 16 as listed here under 10. So, we passed October 3. That's done.
We can just do the 24th and move on.
All right, so if, Mr. Pacheco, if you withdraw that motion, then I'll pass this one, and this one is okay, and we got to do the 17, 10th and 17, once we get it, you know.
Yeah.
This is the October 3 meeting. Should we, no?
Nope, they weren't on there. Okay, we're going to have to figure it out for next time. All right, just, we'll read these.
The 15th week is October 10. 16th week is the 17.
Right.
But we're still not sure because we haven't seen it.
But it's the dollars that we don't know what you're accurate.
We're just going to move on. We're going to do the 24th, and we'll come back to the 10th and the 17th.
So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the warrants from October 24. 17A-19, $91,238.12. 17B-19 in the amount of $18,238.91. 17C-19 in the amount of $214,830.69. And 17D-19, $300,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Can I have that paper back so I can put my stuff in?
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Public input.
All right, no update on the score.
There's no score? Okay.
They're probably winning, so I'm glad I'm watching.
Thank you for coming.
So, as chairman, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Exceptions, one, which is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions of contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the public body. I do declare, open session will not reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Cable, thank you so much. I hope you have some time to spend with family tonight and get a nice warm meal.
Oh, socks.
And give us that score on the Red Sox before you leave. Thank you. Everybody have a great.